It was a motion.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order for the July 29 budget meeting. Let's go ahead and start by a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Fitzwater, Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Present.
Hussey, Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Okay, we have a forum, so I think we'll go ahead and start the agenda with revenue discussion and then maybe we have some opportunities for people to have some discussion. So Margie, would you like to start the discussion on revenue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we are doing things a little bit different this year. You know, normally we would start with the mayor presenting our budget, go over some budget highlights, and talk about, you know, kind of the high level of the budget from the general fund and the other funds. And so that portion of the meeting is actually going to be Thursday since the mayor's not present tonight. So kind of out of order, we're going to do revenues first and then we'll do the five year forecast. So I will go as fast or as slow as you would like me to go, or in as little detail or as much detail as you would like me to be. So in your big budget book, there is a tab for revenues and it actually is, page 12 is the beginning of it. The section that we're going to be going over is just the general fund. The totals, the total is $32,906,901 for the general fund, which is just a slight increase from the previous year's budget. It's $99,511 more than last year's budget, which is 0.3%. And just a broad observation, the sales tax, 2% increase that's built into this proposed budget, which is usually around, you know, a 200,000 mark, is pretty much offset this year with reductions of the amount that we're getting from our telephone GRT tax. And I think Ryan Moulman mentioned this at a finance committee meeting. There's currently a lawsuit at the Missouri Supreme Court to define what a telephone service is. So it might be years before that's settled. And so until then, we're seeing declining revenues in that line that almost offset the increase in our sales tax. So that's why we're pretty much flat this year, even though we do have a 2% increase built into the budget for the sales tax line, which is the first line on page 12. So the current year, we have a, the last, the 2019 budget did include a 2% increase. We are continuing with that 2% increase for 2020, so that's about almost a $233,000 increase over the current year's budget. The next section of revenues is the intergovernmental taxes, the motor vehicle tax, the gasoline tax, and the road and bridge tax. Those three lines have stayed pretty steady. We do have a little bit of an increase on the road and bridge tax, just based on the last few years' actual receipts. The other tax is a cigarette tax that continues to decline, so there is actually going to be a decrease in the proposed FY '20 budget for that line item. The next section is our franchise and utility tax, and that's where you're going to see the line that I'm talking about. So the electric utility tax, we based that increase on a one-year rolling average, so there's about a $40,000 increase over the current year's budget. The gasoline utility tax has about a $30,000 increase over the current year's budget, and that was based on a three-year rolling average. But that telephone cell utility tax in 2019 was budgeted at $2,500,000. In 2020, the proposed budget is $1,800,000, which is a reduction of $250,000. And so that's based on a one-year rolling average, and it's still trending down. And then the cable franchise tax is also another line item that's trending down, not as greatly as the telephone cell tax, but overall, that whole section, the 2019 revenue budget was $7,435,000. This 2020 proposed budget is $7,205,000, so a reduction of $230,000, which is about the same amount as the increase in sales tax. Am I going too fast? Are there any questions? Keep going. So the next section is property taxes. Our current property tax line is based on a one-year rolling average. We have received the Cole County numbers on assessed property, but we have not received Callaway Counties yet. But this projection is based on a one-year rolling average, and so it is $30,000 greater than the 2019 budget. And the other line items, the financial institution tax, which is one down from that, continues to show a decline. So that line item is actually a decrease of $11,000 for the 2020 budget. The, skipping down to the last line in that section, the special tax revenue, we based that on a two- and three-year rolling average, so last year's budget was $41,000, this year's $48,000, so an increase of $7,000. So the subtotal for that section is about $34,000 greater than the FY '19 budget. So moving on to the next page, page 13, the charges for services. We start with our admin chargebacks, which is a calculation that finance does to take administrative charges and personnel, IT and finance and law, HR, mayor, council, all of the admin, and allocate that to the enterprise funds and to parks. So this $1,555,757 is fairly close to last year's number. There's only a difference of about $324. The EMT reimbursement has stayed steady at $25,000 a year. There's a little bit of an increase in the street cuts, just based on a two-year average and a two-year rolling average of $6,000. The fuel chargebacks, this is the amount that Housing Authority uses for our gas, so it's charged back to them. The parts and labor chargebacks are those amounts that our central maintenance uses parts and labor for the transit, airport, parking, and wastewater funds. The Cole County Animal Rescue is a contract that we have with Cole County, and the contract calls for an increase based on CPI. And so the current year, the proposed FY '20 budget is a 1.6% increase over 2019. Got the rent tower sites has only about a $1,000 increase. The Cole County 911 reimbursement of $388,700 is an increase of almost $4,600 over the current year's budget. That is based on 25% of the total 911 expenses, so that whole division within police department.
What percent was that again?
And then we also have an agreement with the county for GIS services, and that amount has not changed. The last line is the TIF administration, of this section is the TIF administration fee. And so we've got amounts in there for the Capitol Mall TIF, the South Side TIF, and St. Mary's TIF. So that's a total of $19,802, which is an increase of almost $11,000 because of the new St. Mary's TIF. So the subtotal for the charges for services section is a total of $2,873,838, which is about $112,474 over the current year's budget. The next big section is fees, licenses, and permits. We've got liquor licenses, about 2,000 more than the previous year, based on a two- and three-year rolling average. The business licenses is actually a little bit of a decline, based on a three- and two-year rolling average. The next one of note is the building construction fees, going from $283,000 for the current year adopted budget to $260,000, is based on a one-year rolling average, taking out those one times. But the new Jeff City High School was in the 2019 budget, so that's most of that decline. The other kind of line of note further down is the animal redemption fees. It went from 2019 budget of $65,000 to $108,000, an increase of $43,000. That's based on a fee increase that's being implemented, I think they implemented at the beginning of the year, or beginning of this month.
Recently.
Yeah, so recently, there was an increase in the adoption fees for dogs and cats, and they've got it outlined, and it was based on looking at other animal shelters, comparable animal shelters, and those rates hadn't been raised in quite a few years. So that $43,000 is strictly from the rate increase for the adoptions. Then almost to the end of that section, we've got rezoning requests. You'll note that that, the 2019 budget was $16,100, and it's zero in 2020. That's because it's actually reported on the line below, the planning and zoning review fees. So if you look at those two in conjunction with each other, it's about even with last year. So the totals for that section is $902,520, which is about $23,000 over the 2019 budget. So continuing on page 14, the fines and forfeitures section. We continue to see a downward trend in the court costs, so that's about $5,000 less than the FY '19 budget. And then a little bit further down, the police fines traffic, which is the court fines, actually. We have a budget, proposed budget of $630,000, which is $55,000 less than the 2019 adopted budget, because we continue to see a downward trend. So that is the average of the two-year and one-year rolling averages. It's just trending down. And then parking fines, the second to the last line, is based on an average two- and three-year rolling average, and it's about $6,000 less. So that section is $766,600, which is $68,300 less than the 2019 budget. The next section is contributions and donations. So the line at the very end of, on page 14, is the street repair solid waste contract with Allied that has a percentage of increase each year. So it is going to $331,594, according to the contract, which is about 90, a little over $9,300 more than the current year's budget. And then moving on to page 15. Under other operating revenues, we have just a miscellaneous line that is trending down a little bit, so we've got a $5,000 decrease on that line. The revenue share, which is our credit card, our P cards, our purchasing cards, just $1,000 less than the current year, so that section's $89,000 compared to $95,000 in the current year, so $6,000 decrease. The interest income, which is the next section, is about $7,000 more than the 2019 budget. And then the other non-operating revenues is our sale of assets from surplus auction and the vehicles that we take to the auto auction. So that's $55,000, so it's the same as the current year's budget. The transfers in section is the lodging tax, the 2% that the city keeps out of the lodging tax before turning over the rest to the convention and visitors bureau. So the total revenues before any kind of grants, that subtotal is $32,178,538, which in total is about, is $133,030 more than the 2019 budget. Are there any questions before I move on to the grant section?
I'm pressing.
So on page 16, the entitlement grants, the CDBG grant is $218,205, which is a little over $7,300 more than the current year. We do not budget revenue, the grant revenue, for those grants that we're not absolutely positive of getting. So, you know, even though you see sections, like for instance, under the police department, where we've gotten revenues in the past of, you know, $98,000, $113,000, $66,000, we don't budget for that until we actually accept the grant. The next section is the school resource officer, and this is based on 50% of the total school resource officer personnel services expenditures only. So when we get to the police department, we get to the school resource officer section, and it has those eight officers' salaries and benefits and some of their expenses, this number, this $328,688, is based on 50% of just the personnel services section, so salaries and benefits. And it's almost $21,000 more than the previous year. The Mustang Grant, there is $6,000 budgeted, that is just for the amount of the DEA vehicle. Then skipping, skipping to page 17, the MPO grant of $154,959 is $61,605 less than FY ' '19's budget. The redevelopment and grant, grant section, the, for planning and protective services of $20,500 is part of the Allied contract, states that $6,000 annually for hazardous household waste and $9,000 annually for recycling, education, and promotion gets paid to the city to cover those costs, and then the remaining $5,500 is from Cole County for hazardous household waste. That remains steady, no increases over the years. So the total FY '20 proposed revenue budget for the general fund is $32,906,901, which is $99,511 more than the FY '19 proposed budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And I failed to mention, thank you for all the time that you and your staff do to prepare this budget for our review, and all the departments that work hard to make everything work, so I failed to mention that in the first of this, but feel duly appreciated.
Thank you.
So any questions? Okay. I think we're ready for the five-year forecast or five-year financial plan as a part of the revenue, right?
Yeah, so at your seats, you'll have a packet that looks like this with several, yeah, big sheets. So if I go too quickly, stop me. The first page is the general fund five-year forecast, and the title also includes the 4% projected unexpended. So there is also a sheet in here that's right after this that will show the exact same numbers, but with no projected unexpended. And what I mean by that is, the first section is revenues, and those are completely identical on the two different sheets. And then the second section are the expenditures. And so where the difference lies is right before the subtotal of expenditures, on this sheet, you'll see a line that says projected budget variances, 4% projected unexpended. And if you look across, it's 1.3 to 1.4 and creeping up to 1.5 by 2024. This is the amount that we historically do not spend out of our budgeted, out of our department budgets on an annual basis. So the next sheet in your packet is this one page, and it has some history of what the budgets were for the expenditures and what the actual expenditures ended up being from 2013 through 2018. And so you can see the level of the variances of the amounts of the actual expenditures that were, you know, compared to the budget, so the budget was not spent. And so the second part of that page shows that the smallest variance was 3.83%. The largest variance was in 2015 of 6.28%. So the median variance is 5.79%, and then you've got some 6, 5, 4, 3, and two-year average variances there. But what is on your sheet is a 4% variance, so it's fairly conservative. Now, having said that, because of the unexpected expenditures with tornado and flood in 2019, we fully expect that we're not going to have as large a variance as we normally do. What that is going to amount to, we don't know yet. We've got some expenditures that we've paid to date, but we also have some that we know we're going to be getting invoiced for, that a lot of those will be paid in FY '19. Some of those will also move into FY '20. What we have done in finance is created an account for tornado and an account for flood, that all of those expenditures, no matter which department it was, codes that, those invoices, those AP invoices, to those two accounts, so that it's very transparent and it's very easy to pull up every single expenditure and have a total on hand. Now, having said that, that does not include the personnel services, the time. That's a separate tracking, and we have that detail that we'll have to use when we, if, when, when we do a FEMA request for reimbursement, when the public assistance is declared. So I wanted to make sure and point that out, that is not taken into consideration on this spreadsheet, but that is something that will probably be spent in FY '19, that we don't normally spend. So the expenditures, you'll see in the gray box on the right-hand side of this page. In previous years, there was a kind of an across-the-board 2% line increase for almost all of these line items. Because we've seen some declines in some of these items, I have taken that into consideration, and there's actually a sheet further in your packet that has all of the detail of revenues since 2005. So I've decreased that projected increase for several of these line items to the 1.68% instead of 2%. And you'll note, some of these line items don't have an increase at all. For instance, the first one is the cigarette tax that I told you has been declining. There's not been an increase added to that line. And then a couple of lines down from that, the, at intergovernmental, we don't have an increase on that line, and so on. So there's a subtotal for the revenues for each of the years. You'll see the 2020 projected $32.9 million that we just went over, and then 2021, because some lines have the increase, some don't, at the lower 1.68%. In total, it's a 1.61% to 1.62% for those out years. And then on expenditures, if you look at the gray box up there, there is a 2% salary increase and a 4% insurance increase, and a 2% increase for most of the other, like materials and supplies, contractual services, utilities, repairs and maintenance, those all have a 2% increase built into them for 2021 through 2024. The shaded lines, kind of in the middle of that section, are the vehicle and equipment purchases and ongoing infrastructure that we've got in our vehicle master plan and our building and infrastructure sinking fund plan. So if you look then at the very bottom, the highlighted yellow line is then the net increase or decrease in the fund balance. So it would be taking, in the 2020 projected line, the 32.9 revenues, less 32.9 So it would be taking in the 2020 projected line, the 32.9 revenues, less 32.9 expenditures. However, we've included that 4% projected unexpended of 1.3, so it knocks the expenditures down to 31.6. In that instance, the 1.3 would be added to the fund balance. In those out years, because we've got those numbers in there for the vehicle and equipment replacements and the building and sinking fund, you'll see that they're actually lower, that we are, there's a decrease in the fund balance from 2021 through 2024. However, if you look at the very bottom, the orange shaded line at the bottom gives the percentage, the minimum fund balance percentage. So 2021 is 25.52%, and then it goes down to 17.13% by 2024. Are there any questions? And these documents will be, you'll find these on the webpage tomorrow.
Okay. Say that again, so I was interrupting you.
It should be on your iPads if you sync it, but it's kind of easier to look at the hard copy.
Point out the line item for the sinking fund that...
The purple and blue lines in the middle of the page, that the purple line is the vehicle and equipment replacements, and the blue is the ongoing infrastructure, the 300,000 for the out years.
Okay. Councilman Prather.
Can you explain the difference again between the yellow and the orange line? It just, to me, it's kind of contradictory. We're going down in the yellow, so the fund balance percentage would be way down.
So in 2020, the 1.3 million that's highlighted there is actually increasing the fund balance. So the unrestricted fund balance, which is the dollar amount right above the last line, is 8.8259,009 projected at the end of 2020. But then 2021 has a decrease of 212,611 on the yellow highlighted. So what is, kind of throws it off there, is that encumbrances and committed line of 949,000 in the section above it. In normal years, that's 50,000, and that's where that went down. So that's why you see the increase of almost 8.3 million to almost 8.9. And then the next year, it goes down. The yellow highlighted line in 2022 uses 393,000 of the fund balance. So then, that then is reduced from the 8.9 down to 8.5. And then the next year, 2023, using 561,000 reduces that 8.5 down to 7. And then finally, in 2024, using almost 705,000 to have the unrestricted fund balance of 6,397,000, which is 17%.
But this doesn't reflect what we may get hit with the tornado?
No, it does not.
Okay, that's if we paid nothing out on those. That's what it would be like, as opposed to what it actually will be like, will be probably quite a bit less once we get those numbers in.
Yes.
Thank you.
And as a kind of a means of comparison, the third page in your packet is the same spreadsheet with no unexpended projected. So if every single penny that was budgeted was spent, then you can see the dramatic difference there it makes, and we'd be in a negative fund balance by 2024. So the fourth page in your packet with the very, very small numbers is the revenue that I was talking about, the revenue budget worksheet that has the totals for those major categories of revenues going back to 2005, and then looking at them through 2018 actual. And that's where I've used a three-year average that highlighted 1.68% that's used then in the numbers that I just presented. So this is kind of just the backup documenting the reasoning for using the 1.68%. So that covers the general fund. If you'd like, I can highlight some of these other funds, if there's any interest in going over them.
I think, go ahead and proceed with that. We have also these other, before the evening's end, I'd like you to go through what each of these pieces of paper, how we're to analyze them and use them. So I think some of them are self-explanatory, but there's, this is the one you were just talking about, right?
The revenues, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the airport fund, and a lot of the reasons that this is in your packet is because, you know, we do have projected amount that the general fund subsidizes for both airport and transit. So if you look at the 2020 projected column, there's revenues of 452,488, and that includes 250,000 of the general fund subsidy. The expenditures for 2020 that's in the projected budget is 493,000, which uses almost 41,000 that is in that fund, are projected to be in that fund by the end of FY19. And then every year after that, you'll see revenues and expenditures amounts are the same, but that is because of that transfers in line that's in that revenue section that shows the amount of the general fund subsidy. So 2020 projected general fund subsidy is the 250,489. In 2021, it moves to 295,350. In 2022, 299,570. And then, you know, at the end of 2024, it's almost 308,000.
Do we have a policy with regard to our enterprise funds to maintain a certain fund balance?
Well, obviously not for airport and transit, because they have a general fund subsidy. The parking fund, which is next, it has a healthy balance in it because of planning for a future parking garage.
But in general, enterprise funds don't require a percentage for fund balance? If they have a subsidy?
It's, we do have a policy that states that the general fund is 17%, and all other funds are 10%.
Okay. But in airport and transit, then, you know...
It doesn't apply.
It doesn't apply, because the general fund is subsidizing that, and you can see from these projections that those numbers, that subsidy increases over time.
Very good.
The transfer in, yeah.
Okay, moving on to parking. The 2020 projected is 1,167,292 in revenues, expenditures 892,341. So an increase to the fund balance of almost 275,000. And if you look at the unrestricted fund balance, it's a little, it's 5 million, almost 5,260,000 dollars, and that increases over the years to 2024 to almost a $6 million fund balance. One?
And if I could just mention, you know, some of the thinking on that fund balance is to try to accrue that in anticipation of building a parking garage sometime soon.
Sure. So it's unrestricted fund balance except for 10% of that, per se, by policy.
The next one is the transit. So in 2020, we have revenues plus the general fund subsidy that totaled 2462,445. We've got expenditures of 2522,684, which uses the 60,239,000 that we expect to see in the fund balance by the end of FY19. So going back up into that revenue section, you'll see that line, the line before the subtotal revenues of the general fund subsidy. So for 2020, that general fund subsidy is 1,147,753, and it creeps up each year to, at the end of, or in 2024, we project that subsidy to be 1,431,638.
Questions? Go ahead.
And then the last page in the packet is the wastewater fund. So 2020 projected column, revenues of 12,558,761, expenditures of 13,273,319, so use of fund balance of almost 715,000. But if you see at the very bottom, that puts the unrestricted fund balance at almost 5.3 million. And then by the end, by, I'm sorry, that last column should be 2024. We have an unrestricted fund balance of almost 8.2 million, and that is without any new debt.
Why do we see a decrease in the expected revenue from charges for services? By 100,000, a little bit north of that.
For the 2020?
Correct.
I would have to turn that over to wastewater. It's, the 2020 numbers are based on the numbers that are in your proposed budget.
Mr. McMorash, you want to...
Yeah, I mean, basically, we just try to run a Forma on the, where we're at, you know, early on in the year and transfer those over. Trying to be a little conservative about it. It's likely to come in a little higher, but on the revenues, we try to kind of be conservative with them.
Now, correct me if I'm not, if I'm wrong here, that we've had a consistent increase in fees that was built in to...
Right.
But that went away, correct?
Yes, that's true. And right now, we are out for a proposal to have a consultant review our finances, if you will, and our service, services, and give us some recommendations on that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Proceed. And then, and then that, the one sheet you mentioned earlier was the unexpected. So my question is, which revenue forecast do you prefer us to look at, the 4% or the...
The 4% is the, is the most reasonable way of looking at it, and still not, is still being fairly conservative. If you look back at the history of the unexpended, now, like I said, though, this, in 2019, it's going to be, it's an anomaly, because we are going to be using probably all of what we've got budgeted to cover the expenditures that we've had to pay, those AP invoices that we've had to pay for the tornado and the flood. And it doesn't include any kind of projected expenditures for the airport, you know, what we're going to have to do there with the terminal, the tower, the lighting. It doesn't include any of that yet.
Any questions left? Any questions right? Does that basically conclude? It looks like...
Unless there are any questions.
Yeah. Okay, I, let's talk about procedure, how we're going to go through the budget process.
I have a question.
Oh, excuse me.
Do we need to approve revenues tonight?
That's a good question.
I believe in the past, we've approved revenues as just the first step in discussing, the discussions of the operating budgets.
Would that, okay, would that, that might be prepared without the mayor's presentation?
Yeah, it's kind of different this year. Yeah.
So, do you know if it's going to change with the mayor's budget?
Excuse me?
Well, it's still presented in the mayor's budget the way you have it, so...
Right, there's no change.
Right.
Yes.
All right, so I don't see any reason why we shouldn't go ahead and just procedurally move on and approve or not the revenues?
Kind of sets the stage for the other discussions that'll be forthcoming.
Right, so I would make a motion that we approve the revenues as presented to us.
Second motion.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared for a vote. I think that's a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Revenue target of 22906, 901, 33. Right? Okay. Thanks, Councilman Prather. Okay, so procedural-wise, we approved the budget, the revenue side, and we'll have the mayor present Thursday at 5:30. And so you want to talk how we typically handle this with the parking lot and on the board, so as to remind everybody how we're going to go proceed with that.
So Thursday night, the mayor will present her budget. We'll have some budget highlights, have some pie charts, kind of the big picture of the general fund budget and then the total budget. Then the next week, we start with all of the department directors presenting their budgets. We, the last couple of years, we've let everyone do their presentations and answer their questions, and then have entertained any changes, and Sheila will put those on the parking lot. In the past, past couple of years, I believe that any increases that have been proposed within the next two meetings, there has to be a corresponding decrease or potential to fund that increase. So it's the committee's discretion to do that.
Are we generally in agreement that that will proceed in that fashion? Okay, good. That was a Prather rule that we're going to implement. We could call it that in the future. Yes.
Could I just mention that department directors are prepared to give a general overview of the department budget, but certainly can get into a lot of the detail if you want them to, and certainly you have those in your books, but I think at this point, their plan is just to kind of give a brief overview.
I'm not seeing very many pink sheet items being funded.
Correct. There were none.
There were none?
Yep.
Okay.
And I think...
In the general fund.
And general fund, correct.
Okay, three categories are, of your, of your pink sheet items are...
Personnel, and then there's vehicles, and then other things.
Miscellaneous, okay.
And we've got a big sheet summary.
At the end of your book, there's a plastic sleeve that has the pink sheet summary for the general fund, parks fund, and all the other funds.
Very good.
From an expenditure point of view, we'd probably go over that next time. Is that kind of the plan?
Sure. So we've, I think we've knocked out procedural. So I would like directors, as they come up, to, when they present their budget, to address the performance measures that are the front part of their budget request. So I'd request that that occur. And any enlightenment they have received from those measures would be fine, too. I think, I think as we proceed, we have to have confidence in this revenue figure, and staff has worked hard for this revenue figure, so it's going to support the expenditures. It looks like it's going to be a fairly tight budget with regard to no pink sheet items. So it, I do, I can't predict whether or not we're going to move quickly or not, but I think I would be prepared to have at least one director in the batter's box more than what we think we'll have. And just in general, is the preference... And just in general, is the preference for us to go for an hour and a half? Would that be an hour and a half?
Or go longer and have fewer meetings, is that the question?
So, I think we're kind of nodding on an hour and a half, but maybe, maybe we could go longer if...
Yeah, I think that, just plan on an hour and a half, but if we all agree that we go a little bit longer and we want to, I think that's fair, too. Just depending on what the council wants to do.
Yeah, I think staff's preference would be go a little bit longer, but certainly prepared to do so.
Okay. Still a night, so...
Right.
Okay, so, we're going to be prepared to have some directory reports in the batter's box that may require two meetings for them. And generally speaking, hour and 30 minutes, plus or minus. And are there anything else to bring forward to this budget meeting?
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
I have a question, just for my clarity. You all may already know the answer to this. On page 14, you was talking about the Allied Waste Money, the 331,000?
Yes.
Is that money dumped or put into, for example, Public Works to add on to the street repair? Or is that just a separate item that's, that's, that's kept out there? Or is that used?
This is part of the contract negotiations with Allied that is put into general fund. Now, Public Works is funded through the general fund, but it is not, is not restricted to Public Works.
So, technically, my answer would be yes. I mean, all the money, if that were to come out, there would be a hunk, similar hunk of expenditures that would come out from somewhere, some of the other general fund departments. And we can discuss how, you know, I don't know what that looks like, but it's not designated as a line item, but it does go into, you know, the overall general fund and Public Works is a big part of that. But it's not designated for, specifically for roads.
Because as I'm looking, if there are some type of additions that I would like to bring, then I know that, what items I can look at, if that's not just a, specific to Public Works. But it's still in the general revenue, I understand that.
Right, and then there'd be a corresponding decrease somewhere else on the expenditure side.
But I think if that, if that money's there for street repair, it may add to Public Works to repair our streets.
It's there for impact on streets. So, it'd be, but also things related to that. You know, police may have a piece of that. You know, I don't know what are the other department issues may be. We could go through there and figure that out, but that would just be one example.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other items? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Yeah, motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Roads?